And ready for people to come and use it. It has two brand-new projectors. And we've turned the direction so that people don't have to try to look through the whole length of the building. Those are just a few little things that have been done here in the building recently that I hope we can recognize their great efforts to keep this building looking beautiful and nice. So I want to thank them publicly for that. The next item is, if I'm reading my calendar right, we didn't have a chance after the Prison Relocation Commission removed the city of West Jordan from the list to thank all of our council members and mayor for the work that you did during this process, to thank our staff members for jumping in. And we treated this as an emergency so that we had the same type of organization that we would at any other kind of event. And I want to compliment publicly that effort and our public for getting behind us and rallying. It was a great effort. Our businesses who supported us, thank you for this great community effort to help us succeed in helping the commission realize that West Jordan is not the place to build a prison. I think it's a great success as a community, and I want to thank everyone for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have problems?
Nothing.
Okay.
I'll reserve my comments for next week's strategic planning session.
Okay, we look forward to that. Tom Berdette?
Mayor and Council, I've passed out a memo that is related to item 5D on the consent counter. And it is regarding a report from the Planning Commission from last night. They would request that we have one additional change to 5D that allows for the Planning Commission representatives to serve on the Design Review Committee for one-year terms with an option for reappointment on a year-by-year basis. The reasons for that is the Planning Commission terms may not always coincide with the three-year term for a regular Design Review Committee member. And they wanted to be able to replace those members as needed at the end of their term. So either take it off of the consent and then act on it separately with this change if you so choose to, or as you approve the whole consent counter, reference this modification to that ordinance would be recommended. Second, we've, I think I reported to the councils some time ago that we received two grants, one from WFRC Wasatch Front Regional Council of Governments and another one from the Utah Transit Authority to help us with some ongoing planning for the city center area. I wanted to report that is moving along. We selected a consulting team out of a pool of pre-approved consultants from the Wasatch Front list, and we have selected the IBI group to lead that team. They have most recently completed a city center plan for Sandy. They're anxious to get started. I met with one of their representatives yesterday. They're ready to get started. So throughout the next couple of weeks, we'll be refining that scope of services and start the engagement of that broader, longer-range planning effort here rather soon. I'll keep the council informed as different steps of that process unfolds. Thank you.
Thanks. Brian?
Yes, the only thing I have is I delivered to each one of you a binder that has this on the front of it. What we were asked to do last year as part of the budgeting process was to get the green sheets to you as quickly as possible. And we kind of set a goal for ourselves to have them to you before we went to the strategic planning meeting. On Monday, the directors got together and prioritized all of these supplemental requests or green sheets. And those lists have been compiled and they've been put together, and they're in these binders for you guys to look at. We also have put in a tentative budget calendar, which we'll talk more about at the strategic planning meeting. But like I said, as a request from council, you asked to get the green sheets earlier. We have gotten them to you today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wyndham?
Yes, we just want to let you know that later this week or sometime next week, we'll be issuing a notice to proceed for the 5600 West project, the northern piece, from 70th South to 62. We won't be closing it at this point. That will happen, as we've discussed with you in the past, the latter part of March. But we want to let you know that construction will begin out there in the next week or so.
Thanks.
Nothing from Fire, Mayor.
Okay, thanks.
Chief? Mayor and Council, we have, this week, on the 9th, there is an effort nationwide. It's called the Blue Light Program. If anybody's familiar with that, you can go online, Google that, and find out exactly what it is. But in short, it's supported and proposed by the COPS organization, which is Concerns of Police Survivors. They help families of fallen officers. And what the program is, is to display a blue light at your house, on your porch, something like that, in your window, something like that, for a police appreciation day on the 9th this week. So I would ask for your support in that, if you would do that for us. Unfortunately, in this day and age, we're not getting a whole lot of support. People think we're out to get them, and we're not. We're out to protect them and help them as much as we can. And so if you could do that, that would be great. Also, I'd like to thank the council and the public for all their support over the last week, a little over a week, as we have, one of our officers went missing and then was found dead down in Sevier County. So I'd like to thank the public and the council for all of their support. His funeral will be on Friday at noon at the LDS chapel that's at, I think it's 8150 Grizzly Way. So thank you very much for your support during that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stoker?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo, I think the city manager, Bryce Hatterley, had mentioned that this, a wonderful resolution for this prison deal, just thanks to everybody, it was just so neat to see our community come out full force, everybody working together for one cause, from residents to staff, to our development, community landowners, business owners, our state delegation in the House, in the Senate, even our federal representatives getting involved. What a neat thing. The commission has a tough road ahead of them, and I don't wish to be. Glad I'm not in their shoes, I guess I would say, but I'm certainly glad that we're off that list. So thanks to everyone. That's quite a relief, to say the least. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo that and nothing else tonight. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Haiga?
Thanks, Mayor. One of my friends that happens to be ill and is a very active figure in her city is sick today, and she asked me to read this that she always reads to us. Ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting. We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance, whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faiths. We seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration be promoting the public good, be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have this week is a request from a number of my neighbors to bring to the police department their sympathies and appreciation for, all that's been done for the neighbors by the police department. Chief, earlier you expressed there seems to be a perception of dwindling support for police lately. From experience, I know in my neighborhood, that's not the case. They may not be the loudest and most anxious to jump in front of the cameras, but there's a significant amount of love and concern for those who walk that thin blue line and serve to, and work to protect us. I always get comments from folks who see the police cars and the trucks as they're over at the 711 over on 70th and Redwood. It always makes us happy to see them there because we know that when they're there, other problems seem to go away. We very much appreciate everything that's been done. And many of my neighbors appreciated the opportunities that they had to try and serve over the last few weeks as the police department asked for a little bit of support. Many would be more than willing to drop everything to help out of moments' notice because we know the love and dedication that your group has. And we know that's not just your group. We know that's consistent within all departments. We've also seen that from Fire. We've seen that from even Public Works when they respond to things like broken water lines. There is an understanding of how much work and effort people put into taking care of us as residents. I've been asked to express that appreciation, and I wish I could do it better, but please relate to the folks that serve with you that we very, very much care for what they do and are concerned for them and feel for them as though they were our own family. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. If I can, Mayor, just, our city supports us and is here. I have not heard one negative comment from any of our residents. When I say that nationally, there are issues, but here in West Jordan, our people care, they understand, and we will continue to serve them.
Thank you. I have nothing this night that hasn't already been said by other members of the council. So we will move to citizens' comments. I have, no one has signed up tonight. We do have two public hearings later, and if you're here to speak on either of the public hearing items, that will be shortly after citizens' comments. But if there's anyone that wishes to speak on a subject tonight, please come forward. One and then the next, please. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Jalen Thomas, 1348 West Barton Hollow Drive. I just wanted to thank you and Councilmember Haiga for letting me bend your ear the last couple of days about a concern I unfortunately came across on December 26th. And it is a concern as far as public safety, but my additional concern is, sorry, our emergency personnel's safety. Sorry. Anyway, I had kind of a, we'll discuss that next week. Congratulations, Mr. Hatterley, you get to join. So anyway, because it's definitely a lot longer than, what, three minutes can be. And considering the situation of this week, it's probably not the most appropriate time. But I do want to thank Gigi with dispatch on addressing, she's one of the supervisors there, addressing an issue that I had a concern with, with one of the dispatchers. And then Lieutenant Waters, he was, Gigi had contacted him and he had contacted me. We talked about the concerns that I had, and he was very gracious and very concerned about my concern about what happened on December 26th in front of my house. Obviously, well, I don't know if obviously, but I just feel like decorating my whole entire house in blue. I love these people. Well, I was a detective now, but I knew him as Officer Stedman, and he, I frequently worked with him as a volunteer advocate, one of my favorite officers. But then again, they're all my favorite, so I guess I can't be prejudiced one way or another because I just love them all, and same with our fire department. Anyway, I just wanted to address that because, you know, sometimes I think officers look at me like I have two heads when I get pulled over and I get a ticket. You know, I'm like, okay, thank you, you know, be safe out there, you know, take care, have a great night, you know. And they're looking at me like, I just gave her a hundred-something-dollar ticket, and she's smiling at me and waving at me and telling me to be careful. So I just, you know, it's my medicine. I have to take it if I get caught. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please.
My name is Steve Jones. I live at 3234 West, 6920 South here in West Jordan. In light of what's happened, I truly express my appreciation to our law enforcement. And as a citizen of 30 years, I am truly grateful for their service. Now I'm going to be a little bit of a wet blanket. Many of you know that I've been here since we started getting flooded. I have not gone away. I do hear of things that go on. I'm not ignorant. I'm not ignorant in the way that our government works. I'm here tonight before you to remind you, you guys work for me. I am a citizen of this city. I've paid my dues, and I understand priorities. Again, don't stand there and tell me that something that's not broke is a higher priority than flooding somebody's home. That is unacceptable to me. Don't tell me that something that's been a problem for 30 years has not had time to work itself out. I am patient, but my patience is running very thin. You have an obligation, as far as I'm concerned, to fix the problem. The funding is there. Use it for what it's intended for. We'll get by with some other projects, and it'll take a little longer to take care of them. But it is important that we stop people's homes from being destroyed. As I've alluded to earlier, it's your water. You've declared it as a state of Utah as being water. All I ask you is you keep your water off my property and out of my houses, in my neighbors' homes. I'm getting older. It's getting tougher to sandbag. I just find it humorous that, in a warped sense of way, of thinking that this is not a high-priority issue. Solve the problem. We have a study that's being done. Look at what it's going to tell us, and then take the proper corrective action. When you do that, you're going to hear no more complaints from us. Thank you.
Good evening. Ken Larson, 7401 South Foxdale Bay, West Jordan. There's been a small pothole that keeps growing, and it's right off, all right on 1300 West and about 7500 South. It is right where the retreatment plant road starts going to the right there, and they switch us over. I know they've been out there at least 12 times to fix it, and they keep moving a little bit more tar along that edge so the cars won't hit it and tear it out. And within about three weeks, it's back up again. If they would just move the, what do they call it, the lines on the road that kind of curvase really quickly, maybe 20 feet, 20 feet to the north, we wouldn't turn over so fast and hit that part. Because I know it does cause problems on people's cars on their front end when they do hit it, because sometimes it's eight inches deep. And it'd just be appreciated if they maybe just black out some lines and move the lines about 20 feet so people wouldn't dive over so quickly on that road. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have somebody get back with you on that. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will close the citizens' comments portion and move to item 6B, public hearing item. Receive public input and consider for approval ordinance 15-02, amending the 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code, Title 13, Chapter 51, amending the west side planning area boundary. Tom Berdette?
Mayor and City Council, this is an item that allows a portion of an area west of the Highlands to be incorporated into the west side planning area that has now been linked to the Highlands Master Plan Development. I'll turn the time over to Larry Gardner, who will guide us through the review of this request.
So, good evening. Peterson Development, which is the owner of the Highlands Master Plan, has asked that this additional 40-acre piece of property on 6700 West and 7800 South, next to the church, be included in the WSPA. Now, the WSPA was, WSPA was a much larger zone at one time, but has been contracted back to just the Highlands Development. And so what it would do is if this text amendment was approved, would enlarge again the WSPA from 370 acres to 410 acres. The applicants, what they are proposing is to build single-family homes there, similar, or at least what they stated in their letter of intent is to build single-family homes similar to what is going in at Lone View at this time. I don't have really, this is just a text amendment at this point. It would not actually be amending the Highlands Development Agreement or the Highlands Development Plan. It just would be amending the zoning ordinance text. I don't have any more to present. If you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to ask. That's all.
Questions from the council? Looks like there aren't any. The applicant like to speak on this issue? Please.
Hi, good evening. Barrett Peterson, Peterson Development, 225 South, 200 East, Salt Lake City. Appreciate being here tonight and for your time. I'll be brief. We have tried over the last year or two to communicate better with you as a council, to try to take a collaborative approach. We've explained to you in the past what we're trying to do here, and it's to enlarge the master plan. We feel like we have a real neat master plan out there that's going to have coordinated entry monuments. It's going to look real nice around that Smith Center out there that you're aware of. And this just allows us to bring more of the same, and it's single-family homes that are upscale homes. And obviously, we'd bring more detail in as we bring in that part of the master plan, how the open space would lay out, and the trails and all of that. But we think it's a real benefit to the community. Happy to answer any questions. Last point I'd make is, staff is in support of this. The Planning Commission also forwarded on a positive recommendation, and we think it's a good fit for this piece of land. So thank you.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Thank you for introducing that. The question, as I read through the information here, trying to find the reason that you wanted to make the change was, other than to put it into the WSPA, I think that just changes the density equation. But was there something other, a compelling reason, something that you were doing as far as developing the overall area, or was there a reason beyond that? That's what I couldn't catch, if there was something else there that maybe I missed.
Well, one reason is density, I suppose, but it's part of the same master plan. One thing we would do is include this 40 acres. We would come to the council and request that it be put into the special assessment area district so you have more units to subsidize the overall open space that you have out there. You know, you look at it, it just kind of squares off this whole master plan. I just did something wrong. So somebody can click something I shouldn't have there. Try that. So, somebody can help me over there. But the landowner indeed thought this land was zoned WSPA, and then the city did away with that. But we think it just makes sense on this piece to keep it that. It's nice lots, seven, eight thousand square foot lots, three-car garages. So just thought it was kind of the best fit for this piece of land. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, though.
Well, kind of. So are you indicating that if the state in the performance-based zone, which it is now, it would not, it would be excluded from participating in the global HOA, whatever it is you want to call it? Is that what you're indicating?
Would it be excluded from the special assessment area?
Special assessment area, excuse me.
That's probably a separate question. I'd probably defer to legal on, but it seems to make more sense if it's part of the same master plan, the same zoning, to be part of the same special assessment area. We thought that that just made sense on those levels. We haven't really asked the question of whether it could be part of the special assessment area under a different zone. We haven't really pursued that, I guess.
And the reason I ask is, and that's why I want to know if there was something, from my perspective and what I understand, I could be wrong, or maybe I've missed something here, but as it falls within the PVA, it could do what you've just suggested, staying in the PVA. So I was trying to, the performance-based area. So I was trying to see if there was another compelling reason that helped with this overall development or whatever by moving it into the WSPA. So that's kind of the crux of why I'm asking the question. What is the reason? Because from my perspective, and again, let me preface, unless I'm missing something, I'm wrong, you could develop it within the performance base the same as you would.
I think so, to be frank with you. I don't know if the city has the zoning in place for the performance-based overlay to go forward. We might even come back with like R16 or R18 as a request. But for this piece, for the, maybe the factors I cited, we were asking that it be put in in the WSPA, and that it's a nice development that way.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Looks like that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will now open this item, 6B, for public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Now would be the time. Seeing none, we will then close the public hearing and return to the council for discussion and/or emotion. Councilmember Hanson?
I don't believe this meets criteria four. I believe we are doing this for a, giving a certain privilege to one person. We passed a gap in trade. If we say, okay, now let's do this 40 acres and give them the pass, who's going to come in next and say, well, this will fit better in the WSPA rather than where it's at now? I do believe this does not fit criteria four. I believe we are doing it for a single property owner, and it's just necessary to make modifications to this title for that reason. So I am against this change. Thank you.
Councilmember Southworth?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a hard time with the grasp for the reasons that we just talked about. I'm trying to see beyond increasing the, this would essentially increase the density. It would stay low density as, but the WSPA density is different from what the performance-based overlay district is. And it would essentially increase the densities. It's not a whole lot. But let me go back to the decision that we made as a city to go away from the WSPA. We have this remnant here, which is based on a whole other story and settlements and attorneys and all this fun stuff. As a city, we've moved away from that, and I think that was a good move. And to bring more property back into something that we've tried to get rid of, I think it takes us backwards. It does not forward the way we want to go. And that concerns me. And so I don't think, as I'm quoting the general plan here, as I'm looking through the criteria, there's a number of areas I could cite, but I'm just looking through residential land use, and I come through the first portion of it, and I just don't think it meets that criteria. Now, unless I can be given a reason why this would hinder the development of some sort, you know, I just couldn't support that move. I love what's going on out there and all the work the Petersons have been doing and what have you. Great development. Great development, Smith and Housing, it looks wonderful, but as a city, I think this takes us back to where we were and not keep us moving forward to where we want to go. Thank you.
Other comments? I'd like to make one comment first. I, I understand for, you know, the reasoning behind, you know, the thinking and the problem I see with this, having the Petersons owning the property adjacent to it to the east, and, you know, the lay of the land is such that it really needs to fall into the same design criteria, in my opinion, to the land that they have to the east. The drainage, the, all utilities actually will connect, and so I see there's merit, and I believe that's why our staff has recommended passing this particular, because it is tied to so much other property that's already in the, you know, the planned community that they have. And were there different slopes or other different things? This kind of just squares off the property that is already under the plan, so that's why I believe that there's an exception here versus other locations within the city. Councilmember Stoker.
You know, I guess my concern kind of goes back. I don't see the huge benefit that I guess some of the other council members might see in including this as part of the WSPA. I, and that kind of caught me off guard. You know, I understand the zoning differences of going from the traditional zone to a performance-based zone, but I guess I don't understand the other benefits, I guess, would come from it. You know, I'm agreeing with the mayor that if they've, they owned over three hundred acres of land, and they've got the Highlands Master Plan, and they've got interconnecting utilities and roads and all of this, I think it only makes sense that their entire property falls within the same master plan, within the same zoning standards. Just, I could foresee complications and problems if, if for some reason we're, we've got forty acres that just don't match up to the rest of the master plan. There's going to be something that's going to come down the road that's going to bite us.
Thank you.
Did you have a? Okay, please.
I move to adopt and instruct the mayor to sign ordinance fifteen dash oh-two, amending West Jordan, two thousand nine City Code, Section thirteen dash five J, two A, quote, W A S P A, defying changing the boundaries of the West Side Planning Area, WSPA.
Have a motion? I will second that motion for discussion. Discussion from the council. Councilmember Hanson.
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate, we either have a gap and trade or we don't, because there's other properties that are owned by the same developer. Is he going to come back in and say, well, this is adjacent, and we need to change it? We voted, and we wanted a gap and trade, that's what we, we all voted for, and I just don't see, I do believe we are doing this for one individual, I am against the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. This one, we had this comes up every once in a while. I really am not sold on either argument yet. I'm kind of seated here, hoping I can hear the compelling argument pushing me one side or the other. I can see, I can see what the developer's trying to do and incorporate this in, but I also see the reason why the council vacated the West Side Planning Area. We vacated it for a reason, and that is why we went with a citywide performance-based planning area rather than just a localized planning area in the West Side, the WSPA. With that in mind, I know that the performance-based zoning, you know, maybe I can throw a question towards Tom. The Petersons have alluded there that we are not ready to move forward with that at citywide, so could you allude into that a little bit? Because for me, I want to have that option for them, so I'd like to know where we're at.
We are going to discuss that at the strategic plan next week. That's at the top of the list in conjunction with the other parameters that we recommended with the cap and trade. We believe that the planning level that those two items are connected. We've been looking at other zoning concepts that are plan unit development-based code, form-based through a PUD type of district rather than a performance-based. We'd like to discuss those with the council and come up with a recommendation at the strategic plan. We think that depending on which one's selected, we think we can write new zoning code rather quickly, but we are looking for some council direction.
Thank you. So, to continue my comments on that, I see that the performance-based zoning is obviously where we want to be, at least from my opinion. I think that's, it's an effective solution. We really don't have that option right now. At the same time, I firmly believe the West Side Planning Area, we left it for a reason. And in implementing this, extending it, or it's not doing us any favors. I don't, I don't feel like it is. I'm probably of the opinion that we would be best served by not making this change right now, that we look at through our strategic session, which is literally next week, we can put some faith into that process, that we can get the performance-based zoning implemented as soon as we can and provide the Petersons an avenue in this lot for that.
Councilmember Stoker.
I just have a question of clarification. Councilmember Hanson mentioned the cap and grade, and maybe I'm confusing this with a different project, but I thought these were going to be single-family homes and are not really part of the cap and grade ordinance.
It's an LSFR zone, and right now it's not in the W, it's in the, not in the WSPA. So, the only thing, it could be a single family, but there's really not a vehicle to implement that zoning at this time, and so.
But they are a single family.
Yeah, it's all a single family property. There's no multifamily on this forty-acre site. Land use maps either low density or medium density.
Okay.
So, it'd be a lot size from two-point-oh to maybe five units the acre, and the third portion would be up towards seventy acres south, would be the higher density portion part, but it's all a single family.
And so, I guess with the density ratios you're talking about, we're looking at about eight, about.
About three units.
Eight thousand square foot lots.
Yeah, and so, the medium density portion is roughly from this point forward, which is three-point-one to five units, and then the rest of it is lower density, which is.
Okay. And since it is single family, the cap and grade system doesn't really apply?
Yeah, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, I believe I would speak against the motion, echoing some of the concerns that have already been raised. The other thing that I would bring up is the idea that if we were to allow this to move back and adopt, adopt the WSPA, which we've already retired, that sets a really odd precedent that even though we've said we've moved on from something, we're allowing to go back to that, that just doesn't seem quite right. Additionally, if the primary reason for allowing them to go back to something that we've retired is because they own a significant amount of property adjoining it, I would question how that would be fair to other developers who might own as much property and might make a similar request. It would seem to me like we would be allowing this based on the amount of property that they already own, which doesn't, doesn't quite seem fair. It seems to benefit the bigger players and not necessarily the smaller folks who may want to do the same thing. And that aside, I didn't see any other real reason for going back to WSPA. So, barring a more significant reason for the request, I'm of the mindset that this is probably something I can't support at this time.
Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, for the vast majority of this, we're talking about low density versus low density. What's the difference? It's low density. Either way, but there is, I mean, there is a little bit of a difference because of low density in the WSPA is probably medium density in the PVA with the performance-based overlay now. So, there is a little bit of a difference. But with respect to our general plan and the work that went into that, I think it would be, it would be us to take some time and think a little bit more about this and consider the modifications. I can count as well as the next guy, and I know that this will fail should the vote be taken. So, I'm wondering if the, if the council member made the motion is willing to pull it or accept a substitute motion that we table this till after our discussion for our strategic plan, which that gives us opportunity to discuss the PVA and then bring this up with a little more knowledge. And that just protects the ability to, should this be, we decide this is the right move, we, you know, it can be passive future date instead of going here tonight without full information.
Councilmember Higa.
I'd just like to call the question, Mayor.
Okay, your question's been called. Let's vote.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Mayor Rol?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Higa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Vote passes, fails, three to four.
Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we table this item to a date uncertain but following our strategic plan.
Second. Motion and a second discussion of the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Rol?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Higa?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes, send it to favor.
Okay. Public hearing, item six A, receive public input and consider for approval, Resolution fifteen dash zero-two, declaring city-owned real property located at nineteen-seventy west, seventy-eight hundred south as surplus property and authorize the disposition. Bryce.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Based on direction that you've given to the staff, we have proceeded with the steps necessary to bring this matter before the council tonight for your consideration. We also want to acknowledge that we were given some other direction to also see if we could identify a designer who could give us a more definitive price for a potential building. Jim Riding is here tonight, and he would be happy to talk to you more about that, but we were not able to go out and secure that at this point in time because two things. Number one, we need council direction on the location of the building that would help us make sure that we're designing it for the proper soil conditions and elevations and things of that nature. And he also needs, based on how often he's done these types of projects, a budget that you would like it designed within. However, we have, Jim's spoken with designers that have done buildings like this. A theater-style building can go for as much as three hundred dollars a square foot. However, he can share information of why that may not be the best type of building for this type of potential use. So, I just want you to know that staff has gone as far as we think that we can at this point in time to help with alternatives that you've directed us to pursue. Now, leading back to this building here tonight, we have advertised the building, the property in the newspaper four times. That's three more times than necessary by law, and we present it to you. Are there any questions based on any of the actions that we've done, or any questions on the things that we present to you?
Councilmember Stoker.
Just to clarify, the bids closed for the potential sale of the property, and there was a responsive bidder?
That is correct. On Tuesday, or Monday afternoon at two o'clock, we closed the bids. There was one bidder, and they bid the minimum amount, which is one-point-two-five million dollars, which was the minimum value, or the appraised value of the property. And so, they are willing to go forward with the purchase if, only if, you, after the public hearing, determine it is surplus property, and then you would need to accept the offer. So, everything's still contingent on your final decision.
And I know that it doesn't matter so much, but I'm just kind of curious, is this the, is this the business that's just right next to it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Just one more item. We had discussed the possibility of whether they might be interested in allowing a sublease back to the city for any space that they may not need to use at this point in time. The individual from the company that I spoke with, and that Dave Clemens also spoke with, said that they would be willing to consider that, but they need more information, and they need some time to determine what portion of the building they need right now, what they would be remodeling. So, we would still leave that as an option to work with them if that's direction from the council, to see if there might be some room to store things, or maybe an area that people could practice in, things like that. He was amenable to continue that discussion.
Councilmember Higa.
Yeah, if I can ask three questions, Mayor. First one to our city manager. Have you ever, and I've asked you this, and I just wanted to be public, have you ever experienced a situation in your career or in our city where we have surplus real estate?
I'm not familiar with a project of this magnitude, selling something of this size. So, no, I've answered that for you before.
And then, if I asked, or should he attorney, because I've sat on the end too this week. We've received a bid of one-point-two-five million dollars for this building, and Jeff, is it legal to prebid on a surplus, a property that still hasn't been surplus?
Yeah, it's okay to put it out for sale as long as you don't accept the bid or close the sale before the property is surplus. It must be surplus before that sale can go forward. And if council decides tonight not to surplus it, then we're entitled to reject all the bids.
And then, one other question. I asked you this too, so I know the answer, but for public information, have you in your career, you've been with us for ten years, and I know your, I know your background, ever experienced a city, a city government, even as the state government's surplusing real estate property?
I haven't been here quite ten years, but no, I have not.
I thought you had, sorry. No, thank you.
I, you alluded that Jim had some information. Could we have him come up and relay the information that you spoke to Bryce, just before we get into any more discussion?
Well, first off, I'd like to just say thank you for the opportunity, and then I, hopefully you'll have a question or two that I could share with you. But in looking into what we would do if, in fact, we did sell this property and looking at building another site, as Bryce mentioned, there's two things that any architect is going to ask you to give him before he starts designing anything, and that's where do you want to put the building, because it's going to depend on the dimensions of the lot and the size of the lot, that's how much, how big the building can be and how big the parking would be. And then, the other thing is the budget that's going to be available to do this, because in his mind, he may be thinking, oh, you want a theater? I can build you a nice six-million-dollar theater. And in our mind, we're thinking, oh, no, you know, we're looking at something probably half that size. So, that's why those two things are very critical to determining exactly what we want to do. So, as this was moving forward, I contacted an architect and quizzed him about some of these things, and he suggested, just as any architect would in constructing or designing a building, they're going to hire consultants, structural engineer, electrical engineer, mechanical engineer. In this case, they also partner up with theater people, because they, there's not very many architects around that that's all they do. So, they partner up with these different consultants. I got the name of one back east, and I talked to her, and. I got the name of one back east, and I talked to her, and she gave me, really enlightened me about the theater and the possibilities that are there. Even in the information she sent me, she sent me information about one at Snow College that they were involved in, one down at Dixie State University that they were involved in. And in talking to her, she explained that in having a theater, and if we're wanting to use it as a multi-purpose type theater, it makes it a little bit more difficult to do that because, and the reason I say that is because when I said to her, well, we probably want maybe something like a black box theater where we can put on some plays and have something that's not three hundred dollars a square foot, but something less than that that would work, and also have our orchestra and our band in there, and she said, timeout. Because if you're looking at primarily just as a black box theater and you want to have these other amenities in there, her statement to me was, your people's ears will be bleeding because the acoustics won't be set up in the same for all the different elements that you want to try to put in this building for the amount of money you're wanting to spend. So she said, you need to be very careful about where you're going with this and what you want to try to do with that particular type of building. So, you know, when I said to her that six million dollars was out of the question, and this six million dollars was for a twenty thousand square foot building, which had about three hundred seats in it, and she said at three hundred dollars a foot, you're six million dollars. And so I said to her, that's when I started backing down. I said, I don't think that's going to work in our city. So we need to see what else we can do. So that's where we tried to give this information to the city council so that they have as much information as they can get at this point in time to make the decisions that they need to make, both regarding the existing old library building and moving forward. It's either now or some point in the future with an arts complex.
Councilmember McConaughey has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Did they make any reference to other multi-use theaters similar to what we see in high schools and middle schools? Because those are, I mean, they seem to work pretty well for multi-use. Was, I guess what I'm trying to ask is what sort of type of theater do this one consultant work with? Is it only something strictly designed only for one type of theater? Or do they do other projects like you would see in public education, like high schools and such?
Let me just read you a statement from one of their pieces of literature. It says that "There's no such thing as a universal facility. Much to the frustration of performing arts professors, a concert hall is not the same as a theater. A facility built to serve a Broadway musical production is not ideal for a ballet or modern dance, much less a music or choral performance. To compound matters, it is difficult for any facility to serve both students and patrons equally well." Now, this was written primarily for people who were trying to do this at a school, at a university, for instance. Certainly at an elementary school or junior high or high school, you can build these, these performing arts facilities that will work. And this is not to say that they won't work. Just what do you want? That's the question.
I, could I just, because I spoke to the same consultant today because I didn't believe the six million dollar figure either. I spoke at length to Rose, the same administrator that you spoke with. And to answer your question, they built every, from a very basic auditorium all the way to very opulent type theaters. And the one thing that I would ask Jim, just to key off of what you're saying, what she stated to me, and I'd like to know what she stated to you. You don't use the same area that you perform in to store and practice in.
That's correct.
Yes, councilmember Higa.
Again, Jim knows the questions I'm going to ask because we spent some time over at the old West Jordan Library Building, which the city owns, by the way. We have the keys, and really the arts folks can start using that as soon as possible if this continues, if we continue to own this. But I wanted to ask Jim, is the building in, what kind of condition is the building in as far as use for our arts folks?
Well, obviously, it's been a library, but you can go in there and you can remodel it and make it work for what you're going to do in there. And I've met others over there and described some things that they possibly could do in there to help facilitate that. It's certainly never going to be the kind of theater that you would build, but you can remodel it into something that is usable for a period of time.
And we drove over there, and I hope I can get that picture. Because the council's been told that there's some big cavities in the floor of the library building. I wanted to go over there, and this is where the books were, where all the book shelves were. And of course, the county's taking just ease out. And if you go into the building, that's probably the only scar. It really, in my opinion, are really good building, but this doesn't cause any safety issues or anything like that.
If you were to just use this as a temporary, meaning three to five years or something theater, you could go in and find carpeting that would be close. You won't find it exact, and you could match those in. So it looks a lot better than what that does.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stoker.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in light of the information you just shared, I mean, we look at the old library, and it has eight-foot ceilings in a triangular shape. I mean, it's great for storing stuff and maybe some rehearsals, but you'd never truly be able to perform in it. I mean, you couldn't put a riser in it, a stage. You would definitely not have any auditorium. And I know that during the, there was a steering committee that was put together a number of months ago about doing an add-on building next to it. And with the cost that you're sharing, that, those costs would just go out the window. We're looking at two to three million dollars just for an addition to the building. And so it seems like the library is kind of a, could never be used for performances. And there wouldn't be enough money to ever make it so.
Well, I look at how they've done performances down in the community room downstairs. That's never been designed to be a theater either, but they've done them in there.
My, did anyone else have a question? Just another question for Jim before he takes a seat. The city got this building without any taxpayer money changing hands, right?
My understanding that.
Only thing we've put into it at this point is to change the locks and keys.
Correct.
And started to pay the power bill and heat bill.
Hatched a couple of big holes in the drive there.
That's all, Jim. Thanks for, oh, wait, I did have one other question. I'm sorry. I lost track. In your professional opinion, if we should build a theater elsewhere on property that the city has that we could build, we have plenty of places that we could build it, what would be your estimated cost for the two-code infrastructure? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but just ballpark.
Well, to bring in, no matter where you go, you're going to bring in utilities, water, sewer, storm.
And let's just say hypothetically, three hundred parking stalls.
You're going to eat up that million dollars easy.
Just for the infrastructure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Do you have another comment? Okay, thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Sorry to put you on the spot. Other, did you have another comment?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoker.
You know, your question about infrastructure kind of, kind of got some wheels turning in my head. And I know we haven't decided on a location, but I know that the existing sugar factory site is adjacent to the parking lot for the rec center and senior center. If we were to use that particular site, we could use, do a shared parking arrangement with the rec center and the senior center, plus we have the overflow parking for the rodeo grounds, and we have utilities right there that'd be in both of those facilities. So I think it's premature to guess how much infrastructure would cost. I think depending on location, we can do it with minimal cost per infrastructure.
Okay, I disagree with that. Councilmember Higa.
I ask Mayor for personal privilege here because this, this old library building is a thirteen-month experience for me. And I want everyone to know that this just didn't come up tonight. This in February of two fourteen, if you bear with me, I know this is long, but it took us longer. Mayor Rolfe advised me of an idea to, with Salt Lake County, to trade existing city property, which we own on our campus, which is Blacktop, to trade the old West Jordan Library. That's what I call it. The trade was an idea to create a home for the arts, a place that we don't have right now, somewhere where our arts folks can go that they can call their own. They can play their instruments as loud as they want. They can play, sing as loud as they want. And to the effect, they don't even have to perform in the dais here. On February twenty-seventh, Mayor Rolfe asked me to attend a Salt Lake County Center Arts Cultural Facility Support Program, which I did along with some other citizens of our community. And this is a program, and I actually made copies, and I put it in all the councils. Then I've given it to the mayor and city manager. It's a program by the county that matches, for every dollar you spend, they'll give you a dollar to a project. But this, these dollars are only to be spent on cultural arts facilities, which is a physical building. And this motivated me even more because if we could trade this building for other property, then we could remodel it. If it's two hundred thousand dollars, the county would reimburse us then a hundred thousand dollars. So that's a reality, and we're at the point right now that if we want to remodel this, this property we own, we have till March to make that determination. So to surplus and sell this property, we lose money from the county, which is our tax server. What happened after this meeting is Mayor Rolfe and myself had a meeting with council member Amy Newton and council member Steve DeBry to talk about this trade. This was a, the mayor brought out a map, showed him the building and the property, and we discussed a process of can we make it a trade? And Steve DeBry and Amy said, let's open discussion. In April, again, Mayor Rolfe and myself met, excuse me, in May, Mayor Rolfe and myself met with Mayor McAdams, his staff, Steve DeBry and Amy Newton, and the county staff, and the library staff, to again, talk about this trade deal. So we're talking about multiple agencies talking about getting a home for our arts. This is way back in May. In the interim, and I'm going to go more brief, with hard work from our staff, which I really appreciate, the staff of the county, Mayor McAdams, and the county council, Steve DeBry in August sent us an email. I think he sent it to all the council, saying that the county library board had approved the sale of this building. Now, that wouldn't happen unless our mayor stood up for you and asked Mayor McAdams, can we make this deal? And then, Steve says, and now it'll go before the county council, and, which it did, and it passed unanimously, by the way. And then in the interim, again, other things transpired with our staff to resolve issues. But they were resolved. And on October twenty-second, this council approved the trade of property for this old West Jordan Library to create a home for our arts. Of course, you know, it's an old building. It's an odd building, you know, but it's something now we have and we own. You know, if you have a place to go now, you have ownership. And I hate to see tonight for that to go away. This is tonight. This is an unprecedented action. Never in our city history, and I've tried to find it, I've asked all the professionals, have we ever, ever surplus real estate? Surplusing property is a car, a car that goes down in value and no longer is needed, or we can't use it. So the administration then notifies the council, and then we surplus that property to the highest bidder. But that property has to be of no use. It has to be obsolete, unused. So what we're doing today is talking about a building that we have now that we own where our new theater, and I have to say this because I'm their liaison, can have their auditions this month over there instead of in our community room, where the adult group can practice, where they can do their auditions, where the band can play as loud as they want on council night, where the orchestra can play as loud as they want on any other night. Or the choir, instead of singing on Sunday, in City Hall, they can sing over there on a day because the building will be available. The other, the other thing is I want to talk about the law, the code, the code we're talking about. And again, I'm sorry this is long, but this is a process that took us this long to get here. And that is, is this really surplus property? The code says this, and I'm going to quote it, "Whenever city property is surplus, used, obsolete, unsuitable, or otherwise no longer needed." Is it needed? I would say yes. And I can, I've talked to a lot of people in the arts that say they can start using it right away. Is it obsolete? No. In fact, you know, it's a functional building that anybody can access of any ability, and it shouldn't be surplus. It should be used now. And then the other thing is, why do we sell it? Why do we want to sell it? For the money? One point two five million dollars. The code says this, and I'll quote, this code that we're going to decide on tonight, monetary proceeds from the sale of other disposition of items pursuant to this section, which is the surplus code segment, will be credited to the fund summary account, which is the general fund. Meaning there's no earmark that we can give this money.
Mayor, can I call a point of order? I'm sorry, councilman. We're in a kind of discovery mode here. We have a public hearing we need to get into. And then we can get into our opinions and what have you. If that's acceptable, I would like to get on with our public hearings so we can hear from our constituents, our citizens, and then we'll go back into our own thoughts and opinions and debate this if that would work for the council.
With due respect, Mayor, um, a few more minutes? With due respect, Mayor?
You got this one.
So I'll finish it up, but we need to know and understand that this building is not obsolete. We do not need the money. We do not need to take this one. We do not need to take this one point two five and, and create some building that we haven't even dreamed of. We need to use it. So I hope tonight that you all know that the mayor, myself, and our, the sitting council. Got this building for you, let's don't give it away, thanks.
Councilmember Stowe.
Thank you, mayor. I just need to, to respond to some of the things that have been raised recently. Uh, with regards to, to the timing of the project, uh, this project began a whole lot longer ago than thirteen months ago. When the former mayor Melissa Johnson and I were meeting with the library in the county. To discuss leasing this before the health department building became an option of a trade. So there was a lot of discussion and action that happened before. Um, that's all that's happened this, during this council session. With regards to the, the grants that the county has, uh, it's a matching grant, uh, up to a certain portion. And, uh, according to the application, there's no limit or cap to that, to that grant, other than the availability of funds. And so if we, if we were to do a two hundred thousand dollar upgrade to the facility, then we get two hundred thousand dollars for a portion thereof. But if we do a two million dollar facility, we get upwards of two million dollars from them, if the funds are available. Um, and so the, the notion that we would be leaving money on the table, uh, would only be true if we decide to. To minimize any sort of project that we're doing with this. So I just needed to make those qualifications, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, mayor, I have, uh, two questions, uh, for, for Mr. Biding, number one. We, we heard how much the, the six million dollar estimate to build something new that would be specifically for a theater. How much do we anticipate it would cost to remodel the existing library to make that suitable? And would that match the same standard that's being presented by this consultant?
Obviously would not match the standards. Uh, I did put in a green sheet for a hundred thousand dollars to do some work over there. And it, uh, that would make it habitable, make it usable for a theater. We could, uh, dress it up a little bit on the outside and some things with that money. But again, it comes back to what does council want to do? How much do they want to spend if we keep that building? Um, I just put that in there as a, as a target to shoot for.
So a hundred thousand dollars, we could have, uh, stage the necessary infrastructure behind it?
Not saying that, uh, just we'll take a look at what we could do for a hundred thousand dollars. First thing we'd have to do is get a consultant on board, an architect to, to go in and do. The, the review of what, and when I say that, they sit down with the users. Meaning the folks that are gonna use the building and see what their needs are and what can be accomplished with the funds available. So it just depends on what it is that is going to happen, and if it's only a hundred thousand dollars, it certainly it's limited.
Okay, so, so it sounds like we don't really have a good estimate of how much it would cost to renovate that into a functional theater per se?
It all depends on how deep you wanna go into making it a theater.
Then my second question is, we, we heard that six million dollars was what would be ideal to make something tailored specifically to theater. What would it be for something more, well, the reason I've been asked this question?
Point of order, mayor, we're talking about surplusing the old West Jordan Library building.
Oh, Ethan, um, please continue.
Thank you, mayor. Um. My apologies, I lost, lost my train of thought a little bit. Six million dollars is what would be ideal to build something specifically tailored for a theater. Our arts groups haven't been using something top of the line, they've been okay to use things like the community room or. At the old rock church or other venues that aren't necessarily, uh. I, that, that are optimal. Um, do we have an idea of what it would cost to do something similar to perhaps what they have? Uh, in some of our neighboring cities or just a rough idea of what it would cost to do something that's. An improvement above what they have, but not necessarily top of the line six million dollar mark?
You're asking me to shoot from the hip? Um.
I would hope it would be shooting from the hip, I hope we'd have a, a, a good comparison to what others in the valley have done.
I haven't gone out and researched what others in the valley have done, okay? So my. My guesstimate, and I use that word heavily, guesstimate would be. That you would be in the neighborhood of probably two and a half to three million dollars to, to build a theater. That would probably work for all the venues that we would wanna use it for in the city. Wouldn't be the quality that certainly these consultants would have us design, but it can be done.
Perfect, that, and, and that's exactly what I was getting for, so my, my apologies if my earlier comments came off sounding a little bit sharp, but. That rough guesstimate of two point five to three for something middle of the line is exactly what I was looking for, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I, uh, have five. Um, just facts and then we'll turn it over to the public for public comment. Um. To be accurate, uh, not to. Argue with my colleagues, but. Two weeks after la- election last year in November, I met with Mayor McAdams. At Iggy Sports Grill in Jordan Landin. He had never heard of anybody else talking to him about the library as a potential trade at that time. Um. We are currently spending thirty eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty five cents. Per calendar year for venue rental and storage rental. I, I asked for this from staff today and received it. Keeping the former library, which we own, would free up at least two offices in this building. That are used for storage for different types of equipment, which are vastly needed. It would allow for practice to be done. Immediately in the former library, not in city hall. There'd be no disruption of any formal meetings. A small stage could be installed that would allow. Some performances and certainly practice in the former library. And something that's been talked about in the last year, uh, the Shore Gallery could have a permanent home for display of artworks. In the little theater that exists in the former library. With that, I'll open the public hearing, anyone in the public wishing to speak, now would be the time. Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
Rodney Kofed, live at twenty one thirteen West Knightsway. Um, I have been for the past eighteen years, been the manager of the West Jordan City Band. Uh, and proud to, uh, work with Delane Jessup, sitting here, who's the director. And, uh, a very big power behind our, our, our group. Um, I would like, I'm on the arts council, I've been a, a, a. Well, I'm gonna digress. The, I feel, uh, from what I've seen, uh, uh, that, uh, over at the. The old library, uh, that your ideas of being used, uh, for a place to practice is very viable. There's room for all parts of the arts, uh, to, to be housed over there. There's room for, uh, um, minimum, uh. Facilities for, uh, people to come in and watch us. Um. I think my point is that over the past eighteen years, we've gone from, uh, having an attic to work in. To, uh, uh, the Bowery. Um, the, uh. The Sugar Factory, uh, if you followed it, we did a masterful job in setting it up as a theater. We almost had it, it didn't crumble in on us. Um, I'm saying we have a lot of arts, a, a, a lot of, of. A lot of people with a lot of talent in the arts. And Dave Newton, Newton being an, an example of what I'm saying, who could take and build us into whatever we wanted. If we wanted to have, and here's a big point, if we wanted to have some larger venues to perform at, we can. Probably still use the Veridian, I'm hoping. It, uh, the parking over there is minimal, but we don't want a big crowd. When we're practicing. Okay, I said my thing, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Celeste Stone, fifty one forty five West Wake Robin Drive, West Jordan. I'm also the chair of the youth theater, and I have, um, some of my other group members here with us, if you could stand up. I, first off, I would like to thank you, um, Mayor Rolfe, for taking it. Um, for caring enough about the arts to find us a home, it's very important to us. Um. Um, we as a group would like to ask to use the old library immediately for auditions. For Willy Wonka in January twenty sixth and twenty seventh and for rehearsals. Um. Since the city no longer wishes to have us here for rehearsing, the only other option we have. Is Pioneer Hall, the old rock church that you're referring to, which will not be okay for fifty children. Inside, uh, I don't know if you've ever been in there with just five people talking, you can't hear. Anything, so rehearsing a play in that venue is not gonna work for us. Um, obviously, we would love to have a home of our own, but this is our immediate need as a group. Um, we also hope that you will make the right decision for our youth in getting us that. Um, that's pretty much all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Delane Jessup, I live at, uh, eighty eight seventy two South, twenty two forty West. And I'm the director of the West Jordan City Band. And I've been weighing this over in my mind, what is it that we want, okay? We can keep the building that we have and we can practice there. But as far as putting on, uh, concerts and things like that, the parking's inadequate. There's no parking there that would support. Our, uh, concerts or our theater. Uh, and listening to the things that's been said, I don't think that we're asking to have a multipurpose room that. Would serve as, uh. Uh. A practice area and also a performance area, those would have to be separate. And I've done a little bit of study in there and it is possible. To, uh, build. A room that wouldn't interfere with the theater so that we could be pr- practicing at the same time. By, uh. Uh. Doing some, uh, uh, I don't know what the word is, I'm forgetting. So that we can do the audio part of it, you know, we can set up walls that. Will dampen the sound so that we could both use it at the same time. I, I would like to see us. If, if we can, uh, come together and if we could, uh. If we could sell the property and that we could build something what we really need. That's what I'd like to see us to do. We're gonna be the second largest city in the state in not very long time. And all of our, uh, people here have to go out somewhere else to have the arts. Experience. All of the cities around us that are smaller have venues and we don't. So. I'd like to say, let's not look at the short term, but let's look at the long term, what is it that we really want? Do we really want an arts complex that will. Uh, serve the community for years to come? Or are we just gonna have a little thing here? That we can practice in, but, uh. Will not serve the purpose of what we'd like to, to have and what we should have. As a city of our size, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robbie Daly, I live at forty eight fifteen Memory Lane. Um, I've been a citizen of West Jordan for a number of years. And I've worked with the theater arts and the youth arts for ten, fifteen years since we performed plays once a year out in the city park. We seem to be driven time and time again out of having a facility to perform in for the arts. But we're still performing. Um, as an example, we recently did our summer show, or our Christmas show. We had five days, including rehearsal in the space, setup in the space, four days, excuse me, you're correct. Setup, rehearsal, we had six hours to load in, build a set, rehearse before the cast got to see their set for the first time for the show. That is unreasonable burdens that you place on volunteer cast members that freely give of their time. I have unique perspective in what I do because of my, my day job. I'm in arts facilities all over the state every day. I bid on projects, I know how much projects cost. We have a million, the one point two five million dollars sitting right here, right now. And in West Jordan, we tend to study things to death and we tend to tear things down instead of looking at how we can reuse them. I'm advocating for an arts facility and an arts home, whatever that may be. If the council decides to sell this building and build somewhere else, that's wonderful, but what assurance as an art community do we have? That you will appropriate that money so that it goes to that arts facility? And the next council comes in and decides that they're going to stop the project in the middle of it and remain unfinished. We have several projects in the city that are that way currently, including the Ron Wood Ballfields where money. And one council starts on the project, the next council comes in and decides to reprioritize. It's time for our arts council to have a home and the people that have put years of their lives into this. To have a facility we can be proud of. It does not need to be the Taj Mahal, but we can't. Practice and perform in the Veridian and perform a quality show. We've done the rodeo arena, we've done the rock church, we've been guests in Midvale, we've been everywhere but our own home. And it's time we get our own home, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Newton, twenty five fifty five Carson Lane. Uh, four years ago, when, when we realized the, uh, library was gonna be vacant, the old library. Um, I put together drawings of possible uses for that, and for the past four years, um, I was pushing for that. When I found out that there was interest of somebody to purchase that building, which is an odd shape. And, uh, would, uh, when we had that opportunity to maybe take the money from that and build something that would. Be more suitable to our needs, I thought it was something we should explore. So it's my fault that we're here tonight. And, and I apologize if it's become something, uh, more than, than what we expected. But I think we have an opportunity. And our arts council, like Robbie just said, is concerned that we have something. And they would rather take that building that might not work as well and use that rather than have nothing. I think this council, as I've talked to each of you, has a desire to make something happen and we appreciate that. And all the work that you've done to get that building, we know has been, uh, a, a lot of work and a lot of effort. And the county has been on our side. I think they would be happy with us taking and making something viable. I think they would be happy with us taking and making something viable that works for us and works well. And I can think we can do that with whatever, whatever amount of money that you decide to put into that. Um, we, we have done it with Knicks to Nothing. Uh, we spent five thousand and, and, and made The Sugar Factory, uh, a theater. That was almost impossible, and yet we did it. So, we can take one point two-five million, and we can do something that's extremely viable. And whatever else you wanna put into it, um, would be great. But if, if that's all that we can do, that would be fine. And if you decide to keep that building, we can make that work too. We want a home, we wanna be able to be proud of, proud of it, proud of, of who we are, and all the effort that has gone into all of this over the last fifteen years. Countless hours and, and great dedication. And, and these people are to be commended for all that work, and we commend you for what you've done. Give us a home regardless of where it is. I think that, that, uh, selling that is a viable solution. And then taking that money, putting it into a structure, combining it with monies that we can get from the county, using our great staff to help with the infrastructure like they did for the Veridian, and, uh, you know, and work some things that way. And I think once we decide that, that this whole group will get on board, and we can have something that we can be proud of. Thank you.
I started writing notes, 'cause I have early onset Alzheimer's, I'm sure that I'll forget everything that I wanna say. Um, there's many of us in this room that have been on board with the theater arts for twenty years. Twenty years of our lives. And we felt like sometimes the city council is just hope that we'd just ride out a dodge and we'd forget everything about our love of the arts, but that's not the case. Twenty-three forty-six Reaper Circle, Pat Oliver. Sorry, forgot. Thank you, Mayor Roloff. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Newton, who have worked so long and tirelessly. I'm not on the same page as many of my colleagues on the theater arts and the Arts Council. I'm a girl that if the hotel in Las Vegas gives me a roll of quarters, I'll take that roll of quarters home with me, thank you very much, 'cause I like the sure deal. And that's how I feel. I would love another Hail Cinder Theater in West Jordan. But we don't need one. We're getting another great big Taj Mahal in Salt Lake. We've got them all over, and I see what's happened in the Farmington-Sanfordville area with the new Legacy Theater. It's beautiful, but it's not the People's Theater anymore. Sandy has the same problem. Their Arts Council has what, one week of access to it in the summer? We can be happy with very little. We really can be. I grew up in a little pulp mill town on Vancouver Island in British Columbia. We had a community hall with a cedar, cedar roof and, and hardwood floors, and we did everything from Polish weddings to Girl Scouts, brownies, plays, musicals. And it worked, and it was a very, very simple building. If I really, really thought that we could take this one point two-five million dollars and get the ball rolling and get something going before I die in the next five years, I'd say, "Go for it, let's do it," and do something lovely. But I'm really concerned about how long things take to get there. We truly could be happy with very little. We could put a play on in that theater or in that building right now. Yes, we could. Peter Pan might not fly, but we could make it work. But we ask you for your integrity and your honesty to please give us a facility before some of us that have the twenty-year investment die, okay? Seriously. So anyway, thank you for your time. We love all the effort that you put and all the love that you put into West Jordan. But please, give us a facility.
Rosalie Richards, and I, uh, live at ninety-five seventeen South, forty-one ninety West, as of a couple of years ago. But we lived in, um, West Jordan for twenty-two years, and I love every minute of it. In fact, I can't go away from the theater arts, 'cause I love all the people. But Pat Oliver and I and two other, uh, people started this wonderful theater group. Twenty, it's twenty-one years, starting, starting this year, twenty-one years, can you believe that? And we're still here, um, because we love it so much. And I've had people say, "Why do you stick with community? You're professional people. Why do you stick with this?" And it's because we love it, it's our passion. We love it. We'll do it in any rinky-dink place or wherever, because we love it. John and Tamara Adams, Tamara Adams was a high school, um, drama teacher at West Jordan. For years, her husband is an extremely good actor, director. They would come to us and say, "Thank you, people, for doing these shows and involving our youth." Because when we get them at the high school, we know that they've had good training, they have learned the joy of theater, the joy of performing, the joy of the arts. And we just, we just love that. And let me tell you, I'll just tell you really quick, first nine years we were in the, the park. We slept out in the park every night for like three weeks so our equipment would not be stolen. And I could write a book on the things that happened in that park at night, and some are really scary. I'd always be so grateful at the end when we were all still alive. Okay, then we were given the ward next to City Hall to share with Gene Fulmer's boxers. And they had the ring in the middle of the chapel, and we, and we cleaned the bathrooms for them, and they helped us bring things in. That was a year and a half, then we were, then that was torn down. Then, thanks to the grace of Dave Newton and his expertise and making a, kind of a silk purse out of a sow's hair, we, he had the vision that The Sugar Factory, that end section where they did the, uh, had the water trucks, and worked a million hours with help from other people off and on. And, and people loved that place, and it was, it was just rinky-dink, but we loved it. It was a home. We could leave our props there. We didn't have to take down the scenery every night. We didn't have to put things away. We could, we felt safe, we could lock the doors. And then, then like other people have said, everywhere else in between, then we thought we'd get some time at the Veridian Center, which that was all yanked out. Okay, I'll be winded up. But I'm just like everybody else, please. I'm a little bit, uh, untrusting because I've been through, how many mayors? And it's not the mayors, it's everybody. It's, it, because everybody has different ideas. Some people would give tons of money to the sports, which they do. The senior citizens get tons of wonderful things. The rodeo was in the red for a million years. We've never been in the red, well, maybe a little bit. But, but we're careful, and we, we just appreciate it, and we feel like, it's when I was on the, the City, um, Arts Council. Arts defines a community. It's really true. And so we would just love a place so we can continue to give to the community. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
My name is Nathan Eddington, I currently live at thirty-two ninety-five West, seventy-five forty-five South. Um, I did not have much time to prepare for this meeting, I did not hear about it until today, so my apologies on that. Um, I've been able to sit back and listen to a lot of discussion on your end and a lot of the things people have spoken of. And I would like to, uh, propose what, to me, a young, I'm biased, I'm a fired kid, but, uh, what a young arts person, um, has heard. And I would, uh, propose to the council that we build an extension onto the building to make it a more realistic shape, whatever is deemed better than a square, square or a triangle. And allow that to serve both as a minor storage facility for the city as well as a rehearsal place for all parts of the arts community. With the thought and intent that later on, when a suitable site was found, we would build a performing stage. Um, to me, it has sounded as though the community is very content to practice as well as perform for the time being in this facility. Having been a manager for a few years, I understand, uh, the space restrictions. And it is for that purpose that I suggest an extension onto the building to make it more feasible to store, um, city equipment and what is allocated there. But I would say, let's keep this building, let's use it as a primarily practice facility. And if certain groups are willing to use it as a performance area, to let them do so until we can build something, as, uh, member McConaughey had said, I believe it was, you forgive me if I'm wrong, something more feasible than the six million, something around the three, two and a half, three and a half, that would do justice for the arts. This is my statement, I give it to you, and I will support what is done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Michelle Grove, seventy-one eighty-three South, twenty-five thirty West. A lot of the people who I associate with are here in this room with me, and they have said a lot of what has been on my mind tonight. Um, I would just like to add, I have been going back and forth with this. Do I want a new car? Do I want a used car? I mean, a wonderful new building would be wonderful, but I'm sorry, you're politicians, and there's a lack of trust. Where would the money go if you sell it? Can you assure us that it will come back and build us an arts facility? And then I hear about, Bill, really? Well, that went fast. Okay. Um, I, I, it scares me to hear about these bigger and better buildings. I've seen it around the valley, as it was said, the bigger and the better building, the more the city is involved, the more the red tape. We can't hold auditions this month yet, 'cause we still don't even know if all of our schedules that we have sent in to, to the city staff, what the master schedule is for the use of the library for auditions and rehearsals this week. And because we can't hold auditions, we haven't been able to receive royalties. Because we don't have a venue, we cannot ask for royalties. This has been going on for four or five years, and we're getting tired of it. We want a place. Also, a new, bigger, better place, I, I worry about, the restrictions will be put on us. It's like buying new furniture and putting vinyl all over it and saying, "Don't sit on the furniture." We loved The Sugar Factory, we loved sharing it with barn owls. We loved seeing the mice come out during our meetings and enjoy the peanuts with us. Because it was ours, it was our community's place. People would come to The Sugar Factory, "Oh, West Jordan's putting on another show." Right now, they don't know where our shows are going to be. So, what you decide, and I, I'm sure many of you have already made up your mind, and what we're saying here is not gonna do a hill of beans. But whatever you do decide, don't leave us out in the cold again. I, I feel like I can get a cardboard sign and say, "Please help, we need a theater," and go stand on the corner. It's been a long time, and we're tired of it. There's promises, yes, you can promise this, that, but as Harold Hill told Madam Librarian, "You pile it, pile up enough tomorrows, and you'll find your left with nothing but a lot of empty yesterdays." I don't know about you, but I'd like to make today worth remembering. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
All right, Brett Turner, fifty-five seventy-seven Good Springs Cove. My mom was actually one of those that helped get this theater started twenty-one years ago, and I have been involved for that long. One of the things I, that's really difficult, that's our current situation, is I'm the one that primarily deals with trying to secure a venue with the Jordan School District, and it's not easy to work with them in finding the suit amount of time to get into a school when only one or two schools are willing to allow us to come in and use their facility. For our next show, for Joel P. Jensen, we can't even bring in our sets and props until Tech Week, which is just three days before our performance. And it's difficult for performers to actually do and work with such a time constraint. And then to actually carry in all the equipment and the props to each place is difficult to buy, find volunteers, men who are willing to come during the day to pull in that stuff. It's hard, it's heavy, and at Joel P. Jensen, we're carrying it down huge flights of stairs. That's not easy. I feel that if you guys choose to sell this place, that nothing's gonna happen after that. That we'll be waiting five to six years, and then something else will come along, and then it'll put us off again. Um, I think we need a facility, and I think we could, as they said, The Sugar Factory, we were able to make it a viable place. We could probably do the same thing with this old library, and I hope that you guys will go in favor of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion of this item and move to the council. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Meryl. Trying to be relatively quick, there are five, uh, five different comments that I wanted to make. First of all, um, there's a lot of, uh, there were a few comments about wanting to have something for the Arts Group to use right now, and the old library would, would fit that, but I worry that if we were to use that mindset to make our decision, we would have our priorities misplaced. I don't wanna give up. I, I don't want to accept a solution for a short-term inconvenience, or we have a long-term solution that could be far better. I don't wanna go with something quick in exchange for giving up something that's better. Number two, it seems like very frequently we try and cobble something together and use it for the use for which it wasn't necessarily intended. Uh, you look at how many times we have, um, taken something that was originally intended for one thing and used it for something else. We heard with the Arts Group, "Let's use the rodeo arena and try and do a play there." Or, I mean, you even look at the park behind us, which was once designed to be passive, open green space, and now we have what's quickly becoming a municipal complex. It's not very often that we get a chance to have over a million dollars in funding, to start from the ground up and design something for its intended use, and that's something I have a really, really hard time passing up. Uh, number three, we talked about the ability to, or, I believe it was, uh, Bryce, Bryce who earlier mentioned that, uh, we may have an opportunity to do both. The potential buyer has expressed a willingness to at least enter discussions about letting us use a portion of the old facility while we work out something else. So, that seemed hopeful to me, that we might have an option to do both and still have that short-term solution, but still work for the longer-term good. So that, that gave me pause as well. Next was, uh, a comment made by Pat Oliver, but I had a similar conversation with Dave Newton about this one before. Uh, concerns about building something too big and too grand. I don't think we want a six-million-dollar complex. I think we want something that's more local, more, um, that, that is obviously owned by the community and used by the community. I worry that if we were to go all out and build that perfect facility, we would find ourselves in the same conundrum that we're in with the soccer complex. With the soccer complex, we had a facility that we thought we could use for tournaments, because tournaments would bring in money. Well, the problem is they don't bring in enough money, so it's subsidized by tax dollars, so now we have to weigh, which do we do? Do we do the things that bring in more money, or do we let the community use it because it's subsidized by taxpayer money? It's quite the conundrum. I don't wanna find ourselves in that same position with the theater. So I wanna build something that's the right size for our community, but I don't wanna be extravagant. I certainly don't wanna go with the three-hundred-dollar-per-square-foot approach. I'd rather do something more in line with, uh, what our Arts Groups will need. And I don't necessarily want to draw in, I, I don't want something so extravagant that it draws in other interests. I want it to be primarily- I want it to be primarily for the community. I don't want others trying to come after that. Um, last of all, I can't help but agree with everybody who expressed a certain amount of distrust with the council. I ran the council because I had a certain amount of distrust for those who were here. Now I find myself here as well and I think the skepticism is healthy. I think it's well deserved. And I would hope that in a decision that comes from the council, we would take that, take those concerns into mind. And while I would advocate selling the library, I would also advocate that in the exact same motion, we also direct staff to come back at our next council meeting with proposals for locations so we can make a decision at our next council meeting. And then also be ready to immediately go to RFP for an architect right after that. Uh, I would like to see if we could have an architect under contract by spring and have construction well underway before this council, uh, concludes at the end of this year. I don't want to leave any chances that things might be left undone, so I'd like to move as, as quick as possible. I'd also like to direct staff to start tomorrow looking for additional funding. Councilmember Stoker, I know, has done some work and found a couple, uh, private entities who, uh, volunteer funds for the arts that we might be able to partner with. We know there's funding with the county. So, uh, I would really like to see us move forward with this to make something specific for the arts groups and I'd like to see us commit to move quickly. Um, although we have had intense, uh, disagreements with this, with the facility, I still have a little bit of pause and, uh, quite a bit of, um, contentment because I, I see that everybody in the council, at least that I've spoken with, everybody wants to find a home for the arts. It's just a question, how do we do it? So I'm hoping that, um, we'll be in agreement that we sell the faci- sell the old facility and move immediately to start on a new dedicated structure, uh, designed specifically for the intent of supporting the arts. That was a little longer than I anticipated. My fault. Thank you.
The council. Councilmember Haga.
I, I appreciate all the arts folks that came out and expressed their, um, their ideas. Um, I'm really the opposite of what, uh, Councilman just said. I think we have a home. We don't need to sell it and we can still dream. We can still dream about another facility and keep what we have. The city doesn't need one point two five million dollars to sit in, in the bank until we decide. Let's keep the building, decide on what, what we want to do and then put it up for sale. But we, let's don't give away something where we have a home. Let's don't make our arts folks homeless again. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Shofford.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thanks for being presented and, and the, uh, comments made tonight. Um, a couple of thoughts that come through, uh, uh, my mind as we go through this. You know, really the question is, what do we want to do as a community? Not as individuals, one person, two people, but as a community, what is it we want to do? And are we looking for, uh, I guess fundamentally, you know, God, we asked this question not too long ago, is this the proper role of government to be doing this? Should we engage in this type of activity? And we talked about it at the last council meeting about, um, things like festivals and, and movies in the park and what have you. And, and that's a really good question, is it or is it not? You know, I could make a really strong argument, this is not. I could probably make one that it is. But you can also say that this is a function of quality of life and that's usually where I fall down when it comes to that. There, there's an aspect of quality of life when you talk about all of these things, we're talking about tonight, what we talked about before, that you really have to consider in a community and what that means to the community. I think that's what we're talking about tonight. So what is it, do we want? Do we want practice space? I heard that tonight. Is that enough? And if it is, for how long and for who? Because of, soon as we do that, one group's going to be happy, one will not. And then we'll wait a week and we'll switch places. And that's what will happen. And, and so it's a real difficult question. Um, we heard a lot of expectations tonight from both, um, dais, from, from citizens. A lot of expectations, a lot of demands. I heard the word "need" a whole lot. I think we need to use words like "want." That's a little more realistic than what we want to do. Um, is anything a guarantee? We, we talked about mistrust. Is anything guaranteed? Cold, hot. Nothing is. If another recession hits us, all bets are off for everything. We don't know what that's like. Man, we're going to try real hard. That has been our intention from the get-go. Um, I think we have some good, a great opportunity. If all we want is practice space, there's no need to do anything. Who does you, but I don't think that's what we want. We want something more than that. And we have an opportunity for more than just practice space. We can leverage, uh, there's all kinds of ideas and ways to do it. We could build, I, I look at a, this is just an example. If we take the piece of property that's right across the street, just east of the, of the, um, the museum and, and we put something there and we build parking space, we know that we have not even close enough parking space for our park. We could leverage park funds to help build a park because that serves the park and could serve, you know, ideas like that. That we could leverage more multiple funding sources and do something that is spectacular. Not spectacular, but what, what we could use, you know, um. But the last comment I would make, and I'm saying I am, I am a point, and, uh, uh, and first, I think selling the property and building something better is, is what we should do. But the last comment I would say is, who is this for? It is not for anyone here tonight. But everyone. If we remember that, that it's for everyone and we, and we approach it in that vein, that this is not a community center, it's not an arts center. Isn't it? It's so that the band can play and the theater can perform and, uh, Missy's Dance School can do their thing and, and, and the baseball team can have a team meeting and, uh, um, and, and whatever. That's a community center and an arts center. It is for everyone. It's not for any of us, but for everyone. If we keep that vein and that's, and that's what we work for, I think we could accomplish something right here. And that's the opportunity that I see that it goes for us. It's not about an ego, anybody's ego. And getting their name in the paper or, or being spoke of well in certain circles or what have you. This is about what's good for the whole community. Thank you.
Yes?
Another council member. Okay. Um, you know, one of the comments that was made in here is that arts define community. Um, you know, we've spent the last year or two trying to go through a branding strategy and try to rebrand us. We've spent money on parade floats. Uh, we've spent money all over the place to, to show that we're a legit, serious city. We got our performing arts people perform in Midvale because that's where the nearest theater is. Um, a lot of the comments that we hear tonight, um, really comes down to trust and a little bit of desperation. And I, I think it's time that we, we prove that we're a first-class city and have an arts facility that truly defines our community. And with that, I make a motion that we approve Resolution fifteen dash zero-two and that we deposit the money from the sale proceeds into a capital support fund and that we earmark that money for designing construction of a new arts facility. And further, that we decide upon a location, um, within two weeks. At our strategic planning meeting, we decide upon a location and that we proceed to hire an architect as soon as feasible.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion to the motion.
If, if I may ask a question of yours, if you can.
You have a floor.
Jeff, is, is not the law of our, our code state that the surplus, the sale of surplus property needs to go into, uh, gen- the general fund?
Well, the, the code, uh, I can just quote, the code says that the, uh, money shall be credited to the fund's under account. That's thirty-one, one fourteen.
Our, our ordinance is telling us where to put the fund, correct?
It, it, it is, but.
Do you think we can override that with this motion?
I, I think what we'd have to do is come back with a budget amendment. Uh, that would go into the general fund. We'd come back with a budget amendment to move that money into the capital support fund. That would have to be a different motion as far as a budget amendment in another public hearing, which we're probably going to do in February anyway. So we would put that as part of that and that money would be moved by February.
Then I'd amend my motion so that rather than depositing a capital support fund, that we come back at a later date to make that budget adjustment to move that money into capital support as appropriate.
My second would still stand.
Councilmember Nichols. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank the public for coming. Believe it or not, you look like maybe I wasn't paying attention. I was writing notes furiously on my iPad. This is what I do. My head's down a lot because I'm typing everyone down. And there are a lot of comments that I'm reviewing over each one and I'm seeing that common theme that, that, that arts wants a home. I, I remember Robbie used that specific term, "Arts wants a home." And, uh, I agree. I, I think it needs to be done. I think we have an opportunity here. Um, there's no question that I've been a fan of this idea. Um, I like the idea, uh, rather, I guess, now I bet my name's twisted around, but, uh, I don't recall who just stood up at the end here, but someone indicated that we need to think long-term, not short-term. We need to think be- beyond tomorrow. We need to think, uh, just beyond the horizon. And I tend to think that way. I don't even like to think about tomorrow. I like to think about ten years from now, where do we want to be? That's the way my mindset is. And the thing that hasn't popped tonight is one different point that you've not heard. And that is of economic development. It seems like a weird place to bring that up. But I think this piece is critical for West Jordan's future. And I think we can make it grand. Uh, I don't think making it a closet is going to work. I don't, and, and you look at, if we paid money to retrofit what we have, that's money that we could spend towards something new and make it even grander. Um, and therefore that's where I will be on this. I speak in favor of the motion.
Councilmember Haga.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak opposing the motion and, and make one point. I want cultural arts in our city. I believe our city deserves it. We need it. If we're going to be a first-class city, we need cultural arts. But we need to start somewhere. Um, I'm opposed to moving the money. I think if the building doesn't sell, we just keep staying in, in it. But we can still proceed with a new one. But I'm opposed to this motion just because we have a home now. Thanks.
I also will speak against the motion. Um, in my tenure here at the city, I've, I've defended and proposed three tin sheds, working first with, uh, former Mayor Newton on the first one. Uh, there's been money funded before from councils for construction of a new one that never got built. We have something now at zero cost to the city. I think it's been stated clearly that there is a need for this building just from the arts perspective. And if there's a need, it's not surplus at this time. And I believe that it would be against city policy to surplus this building right now. It's such a precedence that I don't want to be a part of. And I, I spoke hard against keeping this facility until such time as we generate enough matching funds to work with the county and get a county approval to build a magnificent theater. And like I stated earlier, according to the experts, five point two million is a basic theater without storage. Now, I'm, I was shocked too. That's going to take a long time to generate two and a half million dollars in our budget to get matching funds and then we still have to go through the approval process at the county to get the matching funds. And we have a need today and a need is not surplus.
That's all.
Councilmember Haga.
No.
Councilmember Stoker.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Southward.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Wall.
No.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
We'll pass this next to.
Mayor.
I, any big comment? I believe before we do anything tomorrow, there's going to be a challenge from the Citizens Act about this group, a legal challenge. So before we do anything, let's just wait and see, okay? I just want to make that clear. Please, now.
Okay. Uh, I would move to take a five-minute recess.
What was that?
I'd move for a five-minute recess.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, could I just make one comment? Um, our representative, Kim Coleman, is just walking out the door. I thought if it'd be okay, we at least acknowledge that she joined us here for a moment tonight and, uh, not only thank her for her assistance. Representative Coleman, I'm just, I'm trying to catch you before you walk out the door. Uh, thank her for her participation in the PRC and all of her efforts that she made with the other legislators and legislation and PRC group. Uh, not only did she do all that, but tonight she brought us a special treat. In room three thirty-one, she, uh, delivered a cake during this council meeting. And, uh, so I'm going to make sure that, uh, all of you who have, uh, stuck it out can, uh, go over and join, uh, us afterwards for a piece of cake. That's, I think, what you'll have earned after we get through this council meeting. So anyway, we want to publicly thank her for that and her efforts and it's a special cake. There's a little description of what it's about and everything.
You couldn't say that before the recess?
We need another recess, you know?
I was tempted to do that. However, I looked at the size of our group and selfishly, I was a little worried that we might not be able to make that, uh, go that far. So I apologize to our group, but, uh, if you stick it out, I think there'll be enough based on who's here. So thank you, Representative Coleman.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Kim. Okay, we will move now to business item seven C.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, I've got a quick clarification regarding that comment that was made prior to the recess. Um, it was, you, you made the comment that you would like to direct staff to hold off on anything with the transaction or with the resolution that was just passed pending a potential, uh, lawsuit against the city. I'd just like to voice my opposition to that. I would prefer that we move forward. Uh, unless we have an order from a judge stating otherwise, I would prefer that we, we move immediately.
I concur.
Please do it. I was just getting a warning.
I was thinking, that should probably go unsaid anyway, but that's the bill the council leaves. We'll scheme ahead as we know it anyway.
Thank you.
Maybe, uh, Mayor, we need to, uh, go and close doors and discuss that since it's a legal matter. Yeah, is that something we need to discuss?
Uh, if there's, if there's imminent litigation, um, pending or threatened, then certainly we could go into a closed session if, if the council decides to do that.
We'll discuss at the end of the meeting whether we want to do that or not. Okay, now moving to item seven C. Discussion and possible action regarding Resolution fifteen dash zero-four, establishing a policy on hiring practices for the city of West Jordan. Bryce?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, we were given direction to prepare some language to be considered for, uh, direction on how we should move forward in the future with hiring because of some different input that was given to him. Because of some different input that was given to me, I took a broad swipe and wrote two different versions. And so I give that to you at this time for your input and, uh, direction. Do you have any comments or questions at this point in time with, uh, the language of either one of those, and do you have a preference?
Questions from council? Doesn't look like. I'm sure it would be in order. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comment perhaps we'll write into the motion? Really, there's some proposed language in there. I, when I looked at it word by word, really, there's only two sentences that are different, and the two are there. Of the two, I would prefer the language at same option two. I, and I would actually support the change. Historically, this changed over the last couple of years because every position we had in the city was just being advertised internally. And the only positions that went external were entry vogs. And the frustration in the council at the time, and I was part of that, was that there were many, uh, qualified candidates outside the city who wanted to be employed here and didn't have an opportunity unless they started at the ground level. And the, and as a result, the policy was changed. I would be proponent of this change because it does one thing. I think our policy before is a little overboard. It's where everything had to go out of house. And then I think it's more than appropriate at times when we have not just, uh, I'm gonna use this very carefully because I don't wanna offend any city staff. I value our city staff. But there are times when we might have a qualified individual who is on city staff who would like a promotion, but may buy, may just be getting by, just doing the job, not excelling in the job. I hope that makes sense. This is more of a generality. I don't have any specifics. And so when I look as we go for, out to, uh, to bid for a new position, um, I am thrilled when we have highly qualified, excitable, excelling, uh, candidates on city staff. And I'd like to open that up to those, those candidates who are excelling in their job, uh, to be able to continue with the city and have encouragement to stay. But at the same time, I would like to open up that opportunity for city staff to not have to always go out to bid in those cases. When they have one candidate or two or three, uh, on their staff who they know will not just meet expectations, but will excel or, and exceed our expectations, I'd like to provide that opportunity to them to make, uh, internal hires. Um, this policy basically changes the, changes it to providing a three-day window in which they can review candidates. But what I also like is this, is the fact that it's a collaboration between the hiring individual or the department and HR to get together to say, see whether, uh, the candidates, uh, will be sufficient or whether we should open it up. And I really think we should. Last council meeting, we had someone come here who was, who, uh, for the sake of them, I won't bring it up now, but she indicated in this meeting that she was afraid of our police officers who were being taken away by other entities. If we go to a policy where we go too far and we just hire internal only, we actually, I think we would make that worse. And by hiring out of house and keeping that option open, we encourage people to come. So I, I just like this idea of latitude. It's somewhere in between. Uh, historically, we, in old times, two, three years ago, old and beyond, we just said internal only. We've gone completely the other way where we said always we like internal and external, and I'd like to just see it somewhere in the middle. Somewhere in the middle where we can keep the best option available in every circumstance. And therefore, I like option two. I hope that was a lot of. And with that, I mean, I, there weren't any other comments. Were there other comments, or I'll have a motion. I didn't see any. I would move that we adopt fifteen, uh, resolution fifteen dash zero four with option two.
I'll second that. There are a motion, and Councilmember Nichols, and a second by Mayor Raul. Discussion, motion? Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I will oppose the motion because, uh, in that first section, uh, the department head and HR department will consider internal applicants prior to posting the job externally. Um, I, I really don't like the idea of focusing, I, I think we're focusing too much internally. Um, I agree with Councilmember Nichols that there are many internal applicants that would be well-suited for the job, but I worry that due to, uh, timing constraints or projects that may be coming up, uh, department heads may resort to this because, well, it's the quickest and easiest thing to do. Plus, it makes it more difficult for them to tell their own employees no. And they would only, I think they would only go internally if there was an efficiency in their own group. And we get somebody qualified, yes, we may not have the best possible candidate. The other thought is if we go both internal and external, our folks here inter- our folks here who have already been with the city for a while, they already have a leg up on the competition. They already know the people they've been working with. They already know the systems. They already have experience with them. So they naturally have an advantage. And this would go to validate that we're making the right choice by, if we do select somebody internally. I think by saying that we look internally first and making that a matter of written policy, uh, we're doing our selfless service as, as well as the employees. I, I cannot support option two.
I will speak in favor of the motion because, uh, what's been happening as we replace, uh, positions within our city is, uh, HR gets locked down in having multiple applications on every job. And, and I've seen time and time again, after, uh, multiple, uh, interviews, we end up promoting the person that was already at the city, uh, in that position. It's not fair, in my opinion, to the employees that apply for that job, that have spent their time here at the city. And it's not fair to those that have hopes and dreams outside of the city, spending their time on, uh, uh, applying for a job that really, um, goes to the city employee anyway. Uh, in an effort to expedite, and I see, uh, the backlog at the HR level, uh, I believe that this motion is the right one at this point in time. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I am on the interviewing committee Monday for our, um, assistant, uh, administrative assistant. I have just looked through the, um, I have seven or eight here. There's one internal. The rest are external. We've only got one internal person that feels that we're in that position.
Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I struggle with this because I, I can see both sides of, of the coin and what we want to accomplish, whereas we have employees and institutional knowledge and experience and just these things that, that nobody else would know about a city and all, how little skeletons are and what have you and know how to get things done. And on the other, I don't know being a skeleton in a bad way. It's usually a bad, yeah, well, good and bad, so it's true, both ways. Let's just put it that way. Um, but, but also on the flip side, we've all been new somewhere, and we think we bring something good to the table. And so it's always a good, I think it's a good mix to bring in with that institutional knowledge and experience in one city, maybe bringing knowledge in a different way and, and maybe fresh ideas from somewhere else. I think it's a good mix. One, having it just one way or just the other is bad. You know, you're gonna hurt yourself. And so I, I, I wanna try to strike that middle ground, if you will. And I, I think we're getting really close. I have just a couple sentences in here that maybe I personally would strike out. Maybe the first sentence of, of the procedural part, um, that three-day window thing. Um, you, you know, a- as an employee, I think you have a leg up anyway, on any job. Um, if, if you're already an internal employee. So I think you already have an advantage from that regard. But, but, but I would, I would just like to see, I guess, simply a policy that will help us find that middle ground that, that we can retain the best of the best that we have, but also bringing new ideas and fresh people to, to, uh, uh, energize and, and, you know, let's bring somebody in from city A B and C that have learned things over there that we could, we could benefit from. And, and vice versa. And if somebody leaves our city to go somewhere else, you know, go for them if that's the best thing for them and their family and the situation that they are in. And, and because somebody else is leaving some other city to come here, you know, and that's just the way it is. We all do it that in our lives. And if we can strike that balance. So, so, so maybe if I can suggest a possible, and if this gets us there, maybe amendment to the, to, to the motion maker, which I, I guess Councilmember Nichols, uh, under procedures, that first sentence, i- if we can strike that and, and then just start off on job openings or promotion opportunities are posted, interested employees, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and, and I think council.
Why not order, Mayor?
Councilmember, um, McConaughey had mentioned, uh, a sentence in the first part too. I don't know if he wants to speak up, but he had. But I don't know if he'd be interested, if he would be willing to strike that as part of the motion.
I'm not really sold on the three days idea. I'm looking at the ver- the verbiage of the same paragraph. You're suggesting removing the procedure paragraph at first sentence. There would have to be a little part at the end of that paragraph that would have to be, because it talks about internal posting period.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, i- if I might make a thought or shared thought for Councilmember Southworth, uh, or Southworth Nichols. Um, if you might consider it appropriate to at least temporarily withdraw the motion so that we can have a little bit better conversation regarding what's on the table.
That's up to Councilmember Nichols, but, but only second. I mean, this is the minimum I would, uh, second, so.
Yeah. Uh, we'll, uh, I'll go ahead and withdraw the motion.
You withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I do like some of the aspects, uh, the, the very aspects of the, the two proposals that I do like. I do like the idea of posting internally before the job goes external. I'd like to make sure that we have plenty of notice for the folks that are already with the city as to what potentially could be available. And I do wanna give them first chance to apply. Um, second, it doesn't really say anything about it in here, but I'd also like to, I don't know if guarantee is too strong of a word, but I'd like to make sure that anybody internally posting for another position is given an interview so they can make the, make their case or so that they can find out what the deficiencies are or what skills they need to bring up so that next time a position becomes available, we're actively using these opportunities to help pre- prepare them for that promotion. With those two things, I s- I still think that we should post, uh, primarily both internally and externally. I lean towards the verbiage of the first option because it doesn't say we will consider internal applicants first. I honestly would prefer to strike that whole comment about what we can, who we consider first and who we don't. And I also suggest that we strike the, uh, statement that says unless outside can, unless outside recruitment is considered to be in the city's best interest, we prefer to promote from within our organization. I think that can be a deterrent to inviting the best external candidates to apply.
What was that first sentence you were striking? Was that objective?
Yeah, both of these are the objective sections.
So the first sentence?
Second.
Yeah.
Under objective.
Page three of the electronic version. Unless outside recruitment is considered to be a city's best interest, we prefer. I, I would suggest we get rid of that. And then also that second sentence after that, we generally consider internal applicants prior, uh, to posting the job externally. I would prefer that we give them the opportunity and we post it internally so they have more time to apply. But I think we've put our managers and our department heads in a really awkward position because we say you have to look at your own folks first, and then if that falls short, then you can look outside. It's gonna be very difficult for a department manager to keep motivated employees if he's posting externally because they would know under this policy that they were found to be deficient. I, I, I think that puts our department heads in a really awkward position. So I guess really look at it. I keep the last statement that we're required, the E D O C, uh, statement, and then also, uh, post internally first and then still post both internally and externally. The other thing, uh, Mayor brought up a couple of good points, uh, HR constraints when we're hiring, sometimes they become inundated. I would suggest that if we have an HR issue, we need to look for an HR solution rather than a hiring solution. Um, I, I think we need to fix that process of the process of going, uh, vetting applications through HR is problematic. Uh, second, um, I'd also suggest that, uh, the external candidates, we're not necessarily guaranteeing that they'll have an interview or even a phone conversation. We're just willing to take their applications. As the department head looks over that, again, they already know the people they're working with internally. If they see that there's nothing coming in from outside that even comes close to matching what their internal folks have, then there's no reason to waste time interviewing these other folks. And I think I'll hold my tongue at that. Thank you.
Let me just, if I could just make a statement. Um, in many of our positions within the city, it takes a new applicant a minimum of a year even to learn the area of our city, the, and, you know, the, we, the overabundance of employees would be in that category. So when you hire somebody that hasn't worked within our city, just that alone lends itself because of the non-familiarity with the layout of our city. It should, uh, I believe, now, you already know what I'm saying. Uh, Councilmember Southworth.
Yeah, let me, let me. So let me take a stab at a, a motion here, um, you know, help me out if I missed something that we talked about. Um, I, I would move to approve, oh, what's that? Fifteen, uh, resolution fifteen oh four. Uh, option two, striking sentence two from the objectives, beginning with the department heads and ending where it says minimum qualification of jobs, that entire sentence. Uh, also striking sentence one from procedure, beginning with job openings and promotions and ending with minimum of three days. Did I miss anything that we talked about?
Yeah, one extra thing. Uh, at the very last part of that first paragraph of procedure where it talks about after the internal posting period.
Oh.
I just need to remove that if you're gonna remove the three-day period.
Okay, and including that section, that, that, that's the last of the procedure, um, the first paragraph of procedures, right?
Yep.
Correct. There are no others? I don't think that it's necessary to have, probably not even have that unless somebody sees something else. Yeah, it looks like that would probably become unnecessary based on the, the sentences we're striking. Unless somebody sees something I'm missing. Would you agree?
We're, we're kinda shooting from the hip and I'd need to be more thoroughly, but, uh, as Melanie pointed out, maybe taking all of section B out or if you think the first portion of it, we'd have to remove a word either right before post and then, or after the internal post period. So, um, obviously, doing this right at the dais is a little challenging, but, um, if you make a motion, we'll definitely review it and make sure we haven't missed anything grammatically. And if it doesn't change the body of the text.
Here we go. How about this? Removing the last portion of that first paragraph of the procedure, beginning with B, the HR department down to posting period. Bringing this back as a consent item at our next council meeting. Not approving it tonight, bringing it back so we have time to review and we get another body of this apple if we need to. That is the motion.
Can I just confirm the intent of that procedure then is, just can you tell me the, in your mind, what the per- intent is?
The intent is that, uh, um, I, I think Councilmember McConaughey said it, a- and Councilmember Nichols, that, if we go back and listen to what they said, um, that we are giving, uh, preference to both internal and external people.
Okay. Very good. We'll make sure we have it polished.
I need a point of clarification. What would be, why would we need to adopt this? Why don't we just keep what we have currently? Is, is, you're changing right back to, uh, what is not as specific, uh, any more specific than what we have right now.
Well, maybe I should point out, we don't have anything in writing for an actual procedure at this point in time. Um, as I spoke with John Gardner, our HR manager, he pointed out that, uh, in prior years, the, uh, HR manager would talk with the department head that was doing the hiring. Uh, they would decide whether they needed to advertise internally, externally, and he said about fifty percent of the employees were hired externally and fifty percent internally. He couldn't tell me the exact number of the, um, advertisements that they made, but he said. He couldn't tell me the exact number of the advertisements that they made, but he said, believe it or not, and this wasn't actually counting everything out, he said, so then direction was given to please advertise everything so that we were always making sure we were getting the best candidates possible. He said, so the cost of our advertising and everything went up, and he says, and we look back and about fifty percent of our employees are hired internally and fifty percent are hired externally, we've just increased the cost and the time to go through that. So he expressed his feelings that he didn't believe that we really had a different outcome, but there was a perception, obviously, that by advertising that way, we were always giving a full swath. So I will say this, you don't have to adopt anything and you could just say, look Bryce, go back and work with your HR staff to be a little more open and let's test it out and see how it is and give us a report back on what you're seeing and we can do that after a period of time because there's nothing in writing now. Or this just puts it in written form that we can all hang our hat on something a little more formal. But what I'm hearing is maybe some people feel that it's stripping too much out of it, that we've not really changed it, so.
I think the current policy is exactly what we're trying to put in writing, so I guess why?
I would disagree, it's exactly the same, but it just formalized it now whether we're comfortable with that or not. The thing that, and that's why I say let's take this back to the next council meeting. We have an opportunity to think about it some more, to look at it again, and maybe we're not getting it right here, I don't know. But when we're making it on the fly, I think we should take the time to look at it again. And one thing that gives me comfort is the last paragraph under eligibility says that discretion was given to the city manager to make exceptions when deemed necessary, and that gives me comfort that when if we have an exceptional candidate is internally, that decision can be made and that latitude is there. And so I find that exception's comforting, but the general rule is that we ought to look for the best candidate, whether that is internal or external, for the betterment of the city and the tax pay of the city.
Councilmember Hagan.
Mayor, since this involves the lives of our employees, which I value, we have five hundred, I think it deserves, and I'll agree with councilman Southworth, that it's gone convoluted tonight. I think we need to reanalyze it, but I'm, my position is our employees are always the first and most companies do look in first before they go out. But I think it's too convoluted tonight. My recommendation would be let's reanalyze it, but remember the value of our employees.
We have a motion on the table with no seconds.
That started off as a motion by councilmember Southworth, but then we add clarification, clarification comments.
And that is my motion.
Would you clarify?
Okay, let me clarify again.
I think I've got it. Councilmember Southworth moves to make the following amendments to option two. Remove the second sentence from the objective, beginning with the department, and then I just, instead of putting the whole sentence, I go dot, 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 qualifications of the job is where it ends. The first sentence from the procedure, beginning with job openings and ending with three parentheses, three days. And section B, the HR department, to the end of the section after the internal posting period, and bring back resolution with an updated policy as a consent item.
I could sign that. Do you have a motion and a second? Discussion of the motion.
Mayor, I move that we have this printed out. Because I don't know the motion.
Okay, what his motion is to change this, it's not being approved tonight. It's not being approved tonight. Does that make sense?
That's what I'd like to see, appreciate it.
Discussion to the motion.
I would just say that we keep kicking the can down the road further every time, we just keep jamming up the agenda.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Mayor Roll?
No.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Vote passes five to him, babe.
Okay, with the interest of time, I think that we need to move to item D because that has to be done at this first scheduled meeting. I'm not sure we're going to get everything else done tonight, so. Anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? See you now. Councilmember Nichols.
For this item, the open nominations, did you need to say anything to open or have you just?
No, please.
I just wanted to nominate for, well, first of all, before the nomination, thank councilman Stoker for a year of well done. I know he had to finish it a couple times through the year that I observed, and I'm sure there were a few other times. Thank you very much. And I'd like to nominate councilmember Judy Hanson.
I second that. Discussion to the motion.
Does she accept the nomination? She needs to accept the nomination.
I guess.
I will accept the nomination as long as I may sit in this chair. As councilmember Hagan has decided that is his chair, no one is blocking him.
No, 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 no.
No, the mayor has determined that we will have District One, District Two, at-large, mayor, District Three, and District Four. And we've had this discussion many times in the past.
I don't know if we've had this discussion, it's not the mayor's discretion to determine who sits where. That is set in a policy, I don't want to have an argument over it, but it is in the policies. And the policy does say that there are potential to sit right of the mayor. Now, you made the argument that there, yes, it does, and you made your argument that we're not following all of the policies, and that's true. That is true, there are others that we're not, but I just don't want to set the precedent, it's the mayor's discretion to decide who sits where. That's the council's discretion.
You know, my feeling, I do, my feeling is not about the seat, it's about the organization of our city council. We have a chairman and a mayor that sits here. We have two at-large councilmembers, councilmember Nichols, myself, and then we have districts. And from the very beginning, if any of you are here, I know there's some in the audience, we used to actually say District One, Two, at-large. And so this is a traditional way to do it. I yield to the mayor's decision, that's what I found.
Let's council rules and procedures state, councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor, that's what I'm looking for now under.
I've got it. Seating, this is C, page thirty-six, seating mayor pro temp, and C of D, next to the mayor. Mayor, is the approval of individual council members shall, and the approval, with the approval of individual council members shall establish other seating arrangements for any of their council meetings.
So it says seated next to the mayor, so either seat?
So that could be quite a question, Mayor, is it from the right side from the audience?
No, 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 it doesn't say right side, it says nothing about right or left or wrong or right.
So councilmember Nichols be seated subject to the pro temp.
Why does it matter?
And apologize to everybody in the audience.
There we go. There we go.
I mean, why does it matter?
Let's talk, let's talk.
Is this thing to up her view of resolution? Or are we just not meeting?
Well, she accepted, yes. You're moving her resolution. Would you restate the motion?
Yeah, for some reason WJordan.com is not working for me at the moment, so what resolution number are we? Fifteen oh five, thank you. I move that we adopt resolution fifteen oh five nominating Judy Hanson as mayor pro temp for twenty fifteen.
I second. Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Nichols and a second by councilmember Southworth. Discussion of the motion. See you now, let's vote. I think we've covered this well.
If I could real quick though, my concern is that we might find ourselves in the same scenario that we did last year before you came on, because if for some reason councilmember Hanson either decides not to seek reelection or is not reelected, we'll find ourselves at the end of the year without a mayor pro temp for that time period. So as long as that's noted, that's all I wish to bring up.
That's true, she would remain.
The council rules, though, if you read them, state that then if the mayor pro temp is not there, it goes to the next ten-year council person. So that's covered.
Okay, so I just want to make sure it's brought up.
Okay. Let's vote.
voting?
Yes.
Mayor Roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Absolutely.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Okay.
Do we go back to A? No?
Mayor, we discussed whether we moved with A because of the.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may point out, business item seven B, the discussion of possible action regarding an update from the Sustainability Committee. These fine volunteers have been here for the entire evening.
Do you make an motion that we move that out of order to the next item?
If that'd be agreeable to Mayor, then yes.
Do you think, do you think we could get through A faster than we could B? I think we'd get through A pretty quickly, move on to B, we're done.
I wonder if A can because of.
Well, I think for the same reason we do have some people.
Hey, everybody's out, but.
D, no.
So to clarify, yes, I would make that a motion that we proceed with item seven B.
Okay, we have a motion, second? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion of possible action regarding the update from the Sustainability Committee, Steve Blain.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have here the chair of the Sustainability Committee who is prepared to give a very brief presentation and ask for some council direction. If that's okay, I'll turn the time over to Tom Griffith, the chair of the committee.
Please do.
Okay.
So we'll be very brief, Mayor, councilmen, council people. I just wanted to thank you for that opportunity, we have to be a part of the Sustainability Committee and offer any recommendation and do some research on behalf of our great city that we've been given. And in keeping with our responsibilities outlined and in amended ordinance twelve seven dated six twenty-seven twenty thirteen, I believe, we spent considerable time and effort evaluating adopting LED technology, funding sources for maintenance parts in open spaces, utility fee increases, items of that nature. And we just wanted to come before you today and throw out some ideas that we have for, basically, we have limited time that we're able to meet, you know, once a month for a few hours, and we wanted to have some direction from you folks as to what items you'd like us to spend that time researching and discussing. We have some thoughts for being more engaged in the upcoming budgeting process, revisiting alternative fuel vehicles issues as technology increases, researching as well the water conservation plan. So basically, we request council's direction on those three areas or any additional directives that you may have for us to help the council meet the goals that they have. So that's it, any thoughts or we'll proceed with those?
Councilmember Hagan.
Yeah, you know, I think Sustainability Committee and the Budget Committee was united this year at our first, well, year from now. Yeah, what I wanted to know, what, just give you some information, who's your council liaisons?
We've had multiple in attendance, I believe it was councilman Stoker at one point, we've had councilman McConaughey there at various occasions, and Judy Hanson as well.
Do you, are you willing to help us with the budget?
Absolutely, that's part of our, I think we haven't been as active in that in the past, but we are, we have discussed already becoming more engaged in that process, we'd love to.
That, Mayor, that's what I'd like to see is since we discussed joining the Budget Committee and the Sustainability, that we talk about budgetary items and while the sustainability of our city, so that would be my direction. And possibly bring in some residents that have background in finance that we used to have on the Budget Committee.
Thank you, I'll note that.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. One topic that I frequently bring up is energy conservation. And although we got very specific with LED, I would actually like to see us take more of a broad approach and just find, identify energy efficient solutions across the board. For example, in a past life, I worked in information technology, and the information technologists can implement policies that automatically turn off computers at night if somebody inadvertently leaves them on, or even they can set policies that if it's been in disuse for more than ninety minutes, it shuts them down, at least into a standby mode. Things like that, perhaps we could, the Sustainability Committee, I think, would be very helpful in helping us find some cost savings. I don't have all the answers, but maybe you could help us in researching that.
I appreciate the direction, thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was on the Budget Committee when it was finally decided that they would become part of the Sustainability Committee. And the budget is an important thing that I think Sustainability Committee wants to be involved in from the get-go. They want to see what we're talking about, what we are planning, they want to have a voice in it. And so I think that it's really important that they are involved in that project. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Historically, when it's come to budgeting season, we've broken apart the bulk of the budget and the utility fees and various increases there, there's quite a bit of complexity that goes into that and so many different scenarios, so many different questions that everybody on council seems to have. I would like to direct the Sustainability Committee to become more engaged in that specific aspect of the budget. I think they've got a little bit more time and availability to play with all, play with some of the various scenarios that we just don't have time in a council meeting or even in a workshop to try and go through. So I would like to delegate that to them and have them participate in the presentations back to council when it comes time for decisions to be made. I'd like to see them take a much more active role specifically there. Plus, if you look back historically, the Sustainability Committee used to be part of the water conservation, so that it ties itself right into where it originated from.
We'd be, yeah, willing to help with that.
Any other? Councilmember Hagan.
I would volunteer my services to help your committee.
Upon order, those committee assignments are made during the strategic planning retreat.
We'll talk about that next week.
Just so councilmen knows that any councilperson by law can go to any committee meeting, the committee serves the pleasure of the council, so I don't need to be appointed, I would just like to be a help, thank you.
Other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have, real quickly, I've got a name and a number on here of somebody who would like to come, visit your committee and just see if they'd like to be a member, so if you would like to give them a call.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at a point at which we have expired the time for council meeting, we still have several items. Need a motion to please councilmember Nichols.
I move that we, council, or suspend the council rules and move the meeting beyond nine o'clock.
Second. A motion by councilmember Nichols and a second by councilmember Southworth. Discussion? Yes.
I would oppose the motion primarily for personal reasons, I have work obligations that are not flexible and have to leave at this time.
I will also oppose the motion because I believe that you're very ineffective with the matter and the importance of the other items left on the agenda. Another discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Southworth?
Sorry, face, aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson? Councilmember Stoker?
No.
Councilmember Hagan?
No.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolle?
No.
Vote passes, aye.
Go to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yep, two seconds, we'll give it to.
Discussion of the motion.
Well, just, we'll give it to Councilmember Stoker for the second, and then discussion to the motion.
Do we have anything on consent that is of a, that's a repressing matter from the timeline perspective that would cause issues if it were delayed two weeks?
Well, we have a council meeting next week, and there is one issue on there that needs to be discussed, and I do, we can discuss it, and.
But we can't make, we can't vote on things of strategic mind.
That's right. Yeah, you're right. We have discussion.
I was just going to see, there's nothing on there, but we, we have, well.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. This is discussion to the motion.
Go adjourn.
Go adjourn.
So just to, just to be sure, with the consent titles, there's nothing of a dire urgency that can't wait for two weeks? Is that correct?
I don't.
I'm not aware of anything, Tom, with the design review committee. I guess the contract, Wendell, is that pressing that we get underway on that?
Yes, it is.
So we do have.
But we'll defer to the council if they want to.
What's the start time on that, if that was awarded?
We actually have a, a pre-construction meeting tomorrow. We need to get, get the project underway so that we can meet the, the timeline to get the, construct while the water is out of the canal. So we have to have this done, a portion of it done by April 15th. So we need to move forward on that pretty quickly.
By January 15?
No, April 15th.
Who made the motion in the second on the move to adjourn? Who made the motion in the second?
Nice point on order.
Councilmember McConaughey made the motion.
I, and it was.
Excuse me. Okay. Councilmember Hagan, and then I give the second.
I'll withdraw my second if I was the second.
I don't think adjourned is debatable, though. It should have just.
We still have to vote on that, Tom.
I always vote no.
Let's vote.
No, no, we have an important item on the agenda that needs to be taken care of.
Councilmember Hanson. Mayor Rolle?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember Stoker?
No.
Vote passes four three.
Please don't forget the cake. Room 331.